This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the City of Vader. It is November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and the time is six oh three P. M. Roll call.
Jason Daly. Nicole Henderson.
Here.
Here.
John Hurt.
Here.
Michael Ferguson.
And Mr. Ferguson asked to be excused.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Mayor Shag.
Here. Excellent. We have a quorum. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the resounding justice for all.
Mayor's report. The city accountability audit is still ongoing. They actually were here in person this week going through various documents. So, Kristen, you said all their field work is done. So most what should be left should just be over the phone then?
Yeah, I can send them racking up their documents.
Item number two, water system receivership. The water system action plan is nearing completion, and it should be ready for, well, it will be ready for your adoption at the next council meeting. McMurphy Park grant. We're still waiting on RCO to take a look at that cultural resources report. Parks Board, the next meeting is November twenty-sixth, and the next public hearing for the budget will be also at their next council meeting on December third. And thank you to city staff for, City Hall looked like a gender break house. Pretty cool. Any members of the council have any reports tonight? Okay, no. Moving on to agenda approval. I don't have any changes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda for November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
The motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second of Mr. Hurt. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes for November fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second of Mr. Hurt. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
Make a motion that we approve the end of November twenty twenty-five, end of November twenty twenty-five?
We're in November, and this is the last council meeting.
That Christmas.
Just blew his mind with the whole end of November thing.
End of November twenty twenty-five, thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and forty cents.
You have a motion from Mr. Parsons to approve the vouchers as stated. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second of Mr. Hurt. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports. City Clerk Kristen Miller with the building permit report. This is the first time we're doing this. One of the things council asks for is to kind of keep having an eye on what's going on in regards to building permits. So if we've kind of come up with a little bit of a format for this, if there's something different that the way it's displayed or shared with you, let us know. We'll make modifications.
Currently, I've included the four bigger lots that are dealing with subdivisions. So one of the residents spoke with us about the one up on Seventh. That one's currently being processed for engineer review. The one across the street up here on Eighth, they've been approved to start buildings. One on Tenth and D is currently waiting on the hearing examiner's report. And Tenth and H, they're going to start their development in the spring. If anybody wants me to include one smaller, like ripping permits, things like that, I can. But I don't know that that would be necessary at this point. Those are the big ones for that. You guys have also asked us to move forward with photo work connections. So I've done a lot of work on that this week. Just yesterday, we sent an additional first letter out. We've sent three additional second letters out, and then I'm working on three, like a third, notices and one on another violation. So we're moving forward on those.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have one more thing. I found out on Monday that Tracy at the church will be leaving at the end of December. So I'd like to give him a thank you card for everything that he's done for our residents or the city. But if you guys would like to sign that, then it's your turn.
He's just going with the church going or?
He's leaving.
He's leaving. Okay.
Going to Florida.
All right. Any other questions for that? Oh, it's not, it's not Mr. Rubin's night tonight, is it? All right. Moving on to public comment. Any members of the public have any comments tonight?
Yes.
Please come forward, Mr. Allison.
We're on the panel.
Oh, right over here. There's a microphone right here next to this cool Christmas stuff. So it'll pick you up.
Hi, Matthew Allison. On September twenty-seventh, ten thirty at night, I had two city employees come onto my property, fighting on a fourteen-year-old boy while he's in his room.
These are, these are deputies is what you're talking about.
Pedophile deputies.
Right. The law enforcement. Okay.
The city, I filed a complaint with the city. Came down today, haven't heard nothing. Went up to Lewis County Sheriff's Department, filed a complaint with them. The thing I got with them is it's okay for pedophiles looking through and go on people's properties, look at fourteen-year-old kids and minors, what they're dressing and everything else. What's the city going to do about their pedophiles? Is the city, uh, council pedophiles too, or what's the deal?
First of all, don't call anybody on the council a pedophile, Matt.
I'm at it.
And I'm going to tell you right now, the law enforcement aren't city employers. We hire them to patrol our streets and take care of our crime.
They are employed by the city.
They're not employees of the city, which you keep saying.
They are employed.
No, they're, they're.
They are contracted. Same thing as employee.
We don't have to get into the debate. So it sounds like you did file a formal complaint with the county.
I even contacted Washington State Internal Affairs.
And you have a case number as well for all this. Yeah. So it sounds like you've done everything necessary to escalate your complaint. I think if, I'm pretty sure, I'm confident that if that investigation comes back and the city council were to hear of that and that your claims are, are somehow justified, that council would take action based on that. So it sounds like for now you've done everything you need to do.
Oh, yeah. But when I come down here, the city contracts through the sheriff's department. In other words, they are employed by the city.
That's true. Yeah. If the city wanted to, we could end our contract with Lewis County Sheriff's Department.
So you guys oversee the sheriff's department.
We contract with.
Same thing. So what's the city, are the city employees, city council pedophiles too, or what?
Matt, of course, we're not.
Get out of here.
Yeah, this is a public building.
I don't give a rat. You're going to call me a pedophile. Get your ass out of here right now.
Mr. Parsons.
Right now.
Listen up, guys. Don't you.
Mr. Parsons.
Hey, guys.
It's not necessary.
Come on up to the stepway. That? Get in. You've been asked to leave. Step off. I'm sitting. Matt. Get out of here. No. Sir, come on outside. Let's go. We'll talk to us. Let's go.
Okay.
Mr. Allison, if there is a investigation and if the results come out, we will take action.
Breaking law.
Come on, let's go.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Let's take a moment. I think we were, we were going to discuss a moment of silence later on in the, in the agenda. I'm sorry for that exchange. But officially, you know, we were accused of something, obviously. We differ in that opinion, and he's escalated everything to the property authorities. And if anything were to come up, we would absolutely hear about it, and then council could take action at that time. Any other members of the public have any comments tonight?
I'm calm, but you knew I had something to say. Just don't call us all pedophiles.
The good news is that we're on the downhill slope in the agenda now, and everything else will be nice and smooth.
Yep.
All right. Hearing no other public comment tonight. Moving on to city business. Item number one. Melanie Case. You get to follow that.
Do you want me up here?
Sure.
Okay.
Guarantee, Mike won't get up.
Hazardous waste usually isn't very divisive.
So I'm Melanie Case. I'm the Sustainability Program Coordinator for Lewis County, and I'm in charge of the recycling and composting programs and helping the city plan special recycling events, which I really enjoy doing. Sometimes we get assigned other projects. So I've been helping update the solid waste management plan. This is a plan that's required by Department of Ecology. And so I made a handout that highlights like the process, what we've done, and if members of the audience would like to read that too. So we've been working on this for quite some time. There's a state law that requires the update of the solid waste management plan. And so it's like a lot of the other state plans, like for planning and shoreline, things like that. It's a twenty-year plan, but we have to update it every, every five years. We are a bit behind just with changes in department heads, different things happening at the county. It just takes a long time to do this. So we work with our solid waste advisory committee, and all of the cities are invited to have representation on the solid waste advisory committee. Or citizens from the various areas in the community can be on this. And this is a, this solid waste advisory committee is an advisory group to the county commissioners on solid waste issues. So what we did in this plan update, we updated a lot of statistics, you know, just like Lewis County's population has grown a lot. And unfortunately with that, our disposal tonnage has grown a lot. So we keep track of those things, and our transfer station was built in nineteen ninety-four. So Lewis County has grown a lot during that time, and it's, I think, probably the solid waste has doubled or maybe nearly tripled. So some of the things we need to be thinking about in the future are, is this facility going to be serving us well? Are there things that we can do at the transfer station? Maybe to modify it to make it be able to accommodate the growth and the traffic patterns a little bit more. So those are the, some of the things that we'll be looking at in the future. And since the plan is a requirement, we need to be in good standing with Department of Ecology to be able to get grants. And one of the grants that we get is called the local solid waste financial assistance grant. And that's the grant where we have hazardous waste programs, recycling and organics programs. And we're able to work with the city to have sensitive document shredding events where that paper gets brought in by your citizens and then it gets recycled. The events out of the, our old one-lot drop box, like the scrap metal recycling and community events where people can bring in their hazardous waste and things like that. So we're asking for the council to approve our draft plan update. So how it works is all of the cities, we hope, will approve the solid waste plan draft update by resolution. And then it will go before the county commissioners, probably in late January, for a public hearing. And then we hope that they'll adopt it, and then it gets sent to Department of Ecology for an end up, an additional forty-five day review. And then, yay, it will be adopted, and then we'll have like four, four years, and then we'll start the process again. So I'm happy to answer questions, and if the council wants to take time to review the plan update further, I'm happy to wait for you to do that, and you have time to think about it. Or if you have questions right now, I'm happy to answer those.
Over the council, any questions for this case about the, about the plan? I know it's a lengthy document, and a lot of it only somewhat involves the city, but it's an important thing.
I reviewed the parts that include Vader and skimmed parts of the rest of the plan. So I'm pretty comfortable with it, depending on how the rest of the council feels.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution twelve, twenty twenty-five, adopting the Lewis County hazardous waste management plan.
The motion by Mr. Parsons to adopt Resolution twelve dash twenty twenty-five. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second of Mr. Hurt. Further discussion? Yep. Hearing none. All those in favor of Resolution twelve dash twenty twenty-five, adopting Lewis County hazardous waste management plan, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Miss Case.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. And I mentioned the Lewis County Solid Waste Advisory Committee. So I just wanted to leave this with the council. It explains the responsibilities of the committee and then how it's a required committee by Washington State. So if any of the council members are interested, or maybe there's a citizen, so we'll leave that one to you guys.
Yeah, and that's the group that meets every other month?
Yes, they meet every other month, and they do meet at the Public Works Building on Main Street in Chenelet. But they do have a Zoom option. So if, you know, you didn't run for election, well, that's an option as well. Because we, we have people from Olympia, you know, some of the state agencies, just zoom in.
Would we talk to you about a recycle cardboard?
If the city wanted to have one, that would be Lemay, and I can give you their phone number.
Okay. So just go through them. Okay. We've got that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much.
Have a good night.
We've got item number two. Council to discuss the twenty twenty-five budget estimates for the general fund. So we did include. Yes, we did include in the packet some updated. The revenue wasn't updated yet. We were still waiting on some last things to come in. But we did update the expenditures, the totals, and so you'll see that. But by and large, it's the same document that we've seen in the past. The numbers haven't been scooted around at all. Obviously, tonight, there is no decision that needs to be made on the budget. This is just an opportunity to discuss it. At the next council meeting, there'll be a public hearing, and then the budget will be available for your adoption. Any, any discussion on the general fund tonight? Any discussion on the general fund? Okay. Well, then, moving on to item number three. Council to discuss the twenty twenty-five budget estimates for the sewer fund. Is there any discussion related to the sewer fund? On the sewer fund, again, nothing has been changed, except some of the updated expenses for the year put in there. No discussion on the sewer fund? Okay. All right. And moving on to number four. Council to consider ordinance oh eight twenty twenty-five, the twenty twenty-five, it says twenty twenty-six property tax levy rate. So the property tax levy needs to be set by the end of the month. We need to have it set, our decision made, and then sent off to the county. And so this is our last meeting of the month. So unless we have a special meeting, tonight's the night to choose a property tax levy. And a reminder would be that when we set a levy, it is a dollar amount, not necessarily a percentage. But either one could work for a for a, for a motion. So we would factor in later. There was a reference guide that was sent out that talked about historically where we are with levy rates, where we are compared to other cities, and then also some approximate numbers as far as if the levy were to change, what that might actually do to our citizens. I'll open up to the council for discussion.
These things. I don't know how you feel, Mike, or Nicole, or Jason, but I was looking at the property tax levy and the sewer rates going up. And I kind of come up to a collusion that we should raise the property tax levy up to the twenty-one percent and nothing on the sewer. Basing on.
I don't know that we can do that because they're too separate. That money can't go into the sewer.
It's true that, you're right. So the two funds are separate. Sewer revenue cannot go to the general fund, or general fund revenue can move to the sewer fund if the council voted on it. But obviously, that's not really a thing that we would do because there's not a bunch of money sitting in either one to be scooting it around. I think Mr. Hurt was, there is some, there is some, there is some ability, for instance, like payroll, for instance. Some of our employees get paid out of both funds, right? So like, like our deputy clerk position, they work on the sewer billing, but they also do stuff for parks. And so some of their hours come out of the sewer fund, and some of their hours come out of the general fund. And so there is some shuffling around in the budget that can be done. So for instance, if, if we did raise the, the property tax levy and did not raise the sewer rates, we could make that work. We could make some adjustments, and that would be a viable thing to do.
So it is available for that.
We could do that. Yeah, we can do that and make, and make the budget work. Yeah. You take a little from here, and you move some expenses from here to the other one, or vice versa. But the, the sewer fund is sitting pretty well. Even without an increase, our reserve is not quite as large as what we would like, but there is still reserve. Reserve might be the wrong word, seeing as we have a reserve fund, but surplus is a horrible word.
From a trackability, sorry, let me turn it up. Go ahead.
No, go ahead. I'm mumbling.
From a, from a trackability perspective, I like that hours are billed, you know, appropriately to each fund. I'm not saying we can't change that, but I do like if, you know, somebody's working on sewer, that's billed to sewer, and if somebody's working on general, billed to general. Doesn't mean we can't change it, but I, I do think that's, I like that at first value. I think it's a hard conversation to have right now to decide what percentage we're raising, you know, sewer if we haven't talked about that significantly and need to decide about property tax right now. I think that becomes a complicated proposal. Not saying we, we can't talk about it, but it's, I almost feel like we would need some numbers in front of us maybe to continue that conversation. You know, why a certain percentage makes sense here or there. I, I also want to say, you know, I think I'm a little bit hesitant to, to raise it to the full availability. I think that would be a shock to our residents. We just recently provided a tool to help them understand the impact. And while some of us feel like a couple of dollars a month isn't a big deal, I think some of our residents will feel like that's a big deal. So there's a part of me that feels like increasing it to the full twenty-one percent would be a shock to our residents after not raising taxes at all. I might be more inclined to raise it a few percent this year, a few percent next year, maybe over three years, so people could plan for that. But I also hear what Mr. Hurt is saying, that, you know, we need to have some balance between what we're raising and what we're not. And it's complicated to be looking at all of these things together at the same time. So I might be inclined to do a smaller increase this year.
I'm back.
Thank you, Jason. You're still discussing the property tax levy?
What do you feel, Mr. Parsons? I know your blood pressure's high as mine is right now. I, yeah. I, every year, I hate this thing because just because we pay so much taxes. And I know it's not a tax, but it's a tax. And I, I just, I still haven't been able to to totally understand it, except for more money's going out of my pocket. Away and go. And I do realize that we, we need it so that we can pay our bills, and I love our staff, and so we need money to pay them. And but it's still a frustrating thing to, this is absolutely the worst, the worst part of being up to the council.
Excuse me. It, I know we can raise this or not raise it as much as we want to. If we have a twenty percent bank, we don't need to do it all. If we don't, if we don't have to do it all, if we don't need to do it all. So we could always go at ten percent and just do half of our banking banked down. Or we can do what I think we were kind of talking about this whole year was, if we make it through, that's the big if, we make it through this next year without any breakdowns or any problems, and our annexation goes through, we'll be okay. But we're playing risky what-ifs with, with the City of Vader. And our annexation goes through, we'll be okay, but we're playing risky what ifs with, with the city of Vader. That's, that's the line.
A couple, a couple of quick points, just to, just to. You know, this, the city has, has done property tax increase three times in the last ten years. That is.
And one of them we did, sorry to interrupt, but one of them we did for a purpose, for a project. And then we had talked about. Kicking it back off after that purpose was done. And just like every other government, once you get it, you're not giving it back and we never gave it back.
True.
Well, it, it gets eaten up with, um, three percent pay raises every year and that's just given by the state, that's not anything that we have any control over.
Well, we do, well, that's not true, we do have, we do have control over that, we could not give our employees a pay raise.
That's not.
But then we wouldn't have good employees anymore and so that is. There, there is a balancing act there between.
Like you said, we don't, we don't have any options, okay?
Um, so, you know, a couple, something to remember is, you know, the, the, we, when we set a property tax levy, we, we, we ask. The county for a fixed dollar amount every year, if we don't raise the levy, we don't get more money ever from now until the end of time. This is the only way the city has to counter inflation as payroll goes up. As the power bill goes up, as gas, gas prices go up, we have no other way of, of, you know, collecting more revenue. This, it's not, it's not like we're trying to afford our next social. Social project, you know, uh, like, we're, we're just trying to pay the bills, so, um. Yeah, it's, that's kind of contrary to what most people believe, the property, how the property tax system works, but, um, that's true. Um, except we only raised property taxes three times over the last ten years. Um, that has cost the citizens about fifteen thousand dollars a year, that's total, all the, all of the property taxes in the last ten, ten years. Uh, come up to fifteen thousand dollar increase and that's spread amongst all the households in this, in the city. Um, it is, the city council has done a very good job in not, in not raising rates. But then we've also not been able to afford as much as we have in the past too. Um, you know, our spending power continues to go down year after year. Um, you, you can't not, you can't just hold the line and say, I'm never going to raise property taxes again. Um, you, you can't do that, inflation happens, the world gets more expensive. You know, we're not the, we're not California and have our own economy, it's not, not the way Vader is, so. This is a, this is a necessary thing to do. Honestly, the right thing to do would be this, for the city to eventually, um, catch up and have, use all its bank capacity. And then every single year, use the one percent that we were given and, um. And just stay there for, for the foreseeable future. Um, that's what everyone else does because it's what needs to happen, so. It's why Vader is very unusual and having such large bank capacity and, and no commercial. Worth, sales tax offset that. And some less property taxes, he's all for this.
Well, the. The one thing is, we've, we've got to keep the lights on, but if we end up taking over the water and get annexes H and N. There's some big dollar things that we'd have to be able to purchase to be able to, um. Save money. So we have to be able to have the money for, for that in case like, you know, the water remains breaks. We can't wait for, you know, a rental company to open up and go get a piece of equipment so we can fix the hole. We have to be able to buy our own equipment that can take care of it immediately. Can't, like Joe was saying. We have good employees, we want to be able to keep them.
Oh, yes. So. I'm in a dream world at zero, you're at twenty one, Nicole was, Jason's at ten.
Nicole said three to five. We're a pretty broad spectrum here, guys. I'll draw seven.
Yeah, I just adjusted half without, I just adjusted a half, it says a number, so.
That's a good number, Jason, I just threw out the twenty one because I knew that's what we could push for if we didn't go with the sewer. You know? But we, we have to have rainy day funds though too, in case something happens.
So what number? Gets us to our shortage that we're short, our, our expenditures at the end of the budget? That's something as easy as that that we could do?
Joe, can you tell me what the, what the total is right now, I have a couple of screens open, I can probably tell you pretty quick if you can tell me the difference.
Uh, you say the total, the total of what, Ms. Hanson?
Um, Mr. Daily just asked what the budget shortfall, shortfall is at the end of the year.
Um, okay, currently with the budget that we've sent out, and again, this doesn't have the, um, this has some of the expenses for the month. And not some of the revenue, um, so this will, this will change some, um, so it, um. We're forty thousand short of our, um, two months expenditure surplus goal. So, um, I expect.
So is there a percentage? Yeah, I think that's.
I expect that number to change, um, I think it was, what was, do you remember what that number was last month before I put those numbers in? I have to look at now, um, I think it was. I think it was half that roughly, um, so we're probably about twenty thousand-ish short of our surplus goal on the current fund. And so, um, again, that doesn't mean we're negative, we're not, that's our surplus goal, right? Um, ideally, we have two months of unexpended, uh, revenue for, and like Mr. was saying, a rainy day. Um, and so, um, anything we can do will help, um, ten percent, um, would be eighty five hundred dollars, um, more in revenue for the city. You know, spread out to a, um, um, average house. Eighty five hundred a year, eighty five hundred a year, ten percent is only eighty five hundred dollars a year, uh, increase to the, to the revenue. Yeah, it's not, it's not very much, even if, even if the city used all of its bank capacity, that twenty one percent, it's seventeen thousand dollars. Seventeen thousand a year, uh, spread out amongst everyone in town and so on a three hundred fifty thousand dollar house, that's seventy two dollars a year. Divided by twelve, you know, so five, six, six dollars a month is, if, if you, if you were to max it out at six dollars a month. That's what we're, that's what we're talking about, that's worst case scenario. So it's not. Mr. Hanson said, you're to, to, um, it's, it's hard to say it's not a lot of money when you're not in other people's shoes, but, um.
I think it's a lot that we understand how it affects our taxes and a lot of people are still confused about a percentage, that percentage word. Um, I, I'm still, I'm still happy with the ten percent number. Um, I think it gets us at least halfway through our deficit of what we need. Um. Um, and I, I, it keeps them in our bank and it. Um, it doesn't truly. Hurt anybody's pocketbook, it's like to what, three dollars a month? I, that's, that's, that's kind of what I'm, I'm kind of going with is, is if we're going to and we need to. Um, to, to make some kind of a, a halfway suggestion. But what does everybody else think?
Is that a motion?
No, that's not a motion, we're still discussing.
Yeah, and ten percent on a, a ten percent increase for our levy is eighty five hundred dollars a year. Um, which for a three hundred fifty thousand dollar house is about thirty three, thirty, thirty three dollars a year. So that's two, two fifty. Two seventy five a month is kind of what that comes out to be.
Yeah, I rounded up, sorry.
So, so does this, if, if we go with the ten percent that Mr. Daily's talking about. Next year, we could go another ten percent and the year after that, we go another ten percent or, or does it end some point? Or when we, when we use all of our banks, which is twenty one, twenty one percent, next year will be twenty two percent.
Right? We only get one percent a year.
All right. It, um, we get one percent a year, but the actual amount that will show up as an increase, that percentage will actually be more. Because it's one percent over our current levy, so for instance, if our levy was eighty thousand dollars a year right now, it would be a, a one percent increase to that. So one percent of eighty thousand is eight hundred dollars and so next year we would see a one percent increase of eight hundred dollars. Um, but there would also be some other increases that are available, such as new construction and things like that. And so, so the actual number, the percentage is actually a little higher than that, um, but we get one percent plus, um, our bank's capacity, so. So, for instance, like we said, we, like, you, you know, it's not a one for one exchange, you know, our current bank capacity is twenty one point four nine percent. It, it, we, we've raised, we, we don't have twenty one years worth of bank capacity, right, it's not at one percent. So there'd be, there could be more, more than that, but yeah, we would still have bank capacity next year, we'd have whatever we didn't use plus whatever the increase was for next year. Again, and I, the Vader really needs to not have bank capacity anymore, we, we're not in a situation where we should not be. Not be. Fully utilizing our property tax and then taking the one percent, eight hundred dollars a year. Our one percent increase, it would actually be more than that because if we, if you, all right, I'm not going to stop.
All right, so just a question, Joe, and it, it may be a right or wrong question, if we do get annexed in this next year. That revenue goes up. In our, in our general fund.
So if, if, so if, so if we annex it in, um, you can only raise your property, it doesn't matter if you annexed a property, you're not going to be able, we're not going to be able to, um, raise our, change our property tax again until the end of next year.
Correct.
So if we, if we completed annexation, um, everything would stay the same for twenty twenty six and then.
More revenue though.
And then, well, no, it, it wouldn't change because we would still only get the same amount for twenty twenty five or twenty twenty six.
Yeah, but all those houses that would be annexed in.
So that revenue still goes to the county until the following year.
Okay.
Yeah, and so, and I believe you even need to be done by, uh, the, the middle of the year to be able to take in, take in. So we have to be done by the middle of twenty, like, like July first to be able to, um. Have the possibility of having an increased property tax revenue in twenty seven. So, so let's, let's say that we did, let's say if you could, you could snap your fingers and annexation was done today or the first quarter of next year or something. Next November, when we were having this discussion, we would have to be taking into account the new homes because now they're part of our population. And, um, all the numbers will, will shift, if we, if we'll meet, what would have to happen is we will have to adjust the levy again next year. To accommodate those new homes, so right now our levy is eighty thousand dollars, if we didn't change it, we would have more homes. To spread that eighty thousand dollars out amongst, the city would collect the same amount of revenue unless we changed our levy. And so we have to play a balancing act with raising our levy amount up. So that everyone's, so, so that the city can actually get more money, but, um, everyone's taxes do not change. That would be easier to show on paper than it is by explanation. So there'll be, there, there would be a different discussion next year and some different, uh, ratios to explore.
Well, I have a, I don't have a problem with going with Mr. Daily at the ten percent. Coming down from the twenty one, I just know that we're going to need some machinery. And a couple of other things for the city this next year that aren't in the budget, that we're going to have to look at. Later on and maybe make an amendment during the year for them, but.
Make a motion.
Well, I make a motion that we accept the ten percent levy this year. For twenty twenty six.
We have a motion by Mr. Hurt to, um, approve a levy rate increase of ten percent over the current Vader amount, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second on Mr. Daily, more discussion?
I'm really on the fence here, guys, I really came to this meeting thinking that I wouldn't go above five percent. And so I'm, I'm struggling, I'll just be honest, that I'm struggling with this primarily because I feel like we didn't spend a lot of time educating our residents and so. It feels tough to say yes to ten percent, but, um, we can proceed with the vote.
It's technical, it's, it, these are the tough decisions that we unfortunately, uh, have to.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think I was sort of thinking like we raise it seven percent over the next three years to get to the twenty one percent. We have time to, you know, educate the residents and that kind of thing. And when you tinker with the numbers, the difference between seven and ten is in the end of the world, so I'm not saying I'm going to say no, it's just. I feel like for the record, I want to say, I, you know, really thought we'd stop at five or something so that we weren't doing a shock to the system, to the residents. I think some people are really going to notice this, even though a lot of us in the council feel like three dollars a month or five dollars a month isn't a lot of money, I think it is going to be a shock to some of our residents. And I'm disappointed a little bit that we're not being more aware of that, um, so, but we can proceed, I just felt a little bit. Um, like I needed to add to the discussion.
I want you to know that we, I, I am aware that it, it is going to be a shock, we all on the council, we, we all have property in town and we all have friends that live in. In town and we don't want to see, you know, we, we see everything going up everywhere, but, um, we also need to fund the, the town that we live in and make sure that we don't have any problems. With our facilities, so that's, that's my only reasoning.
Fair enough.
Um, um, and so it's, it's, uh, like we've used this analogy in the past, um, it's like, uh, buying a, a four pack of. Of toilet paper a month.
Still, I think it's going to be a lot for some people, so, okay, but I appreciate it and I just wanted to add to the discussion and I appreciate your discussion back.
Ms. Hanson, I know you've put a lot of time into this, um, is there any information, um, that I could provide to you? Right now that would help your decision or do you think you have everything you need already?
Nope, you can proceed.
Okay, um, we're still in the discussion phase on this, um, and we, there was a motion for the, uh, ten percent, which is eighty five hundred dollars a year. Um, coming out to about, uh, thirty three dollars per year to a three hundred fifty thousand dollar house. And Miss Hanson was talking about seven percent versus ten percent, I think that it comes out to about fifty cents a month. Again, that's not nothing, but, um, that is. It was fairly small. If there's any other discussion on this, okay, well, let's take a vote. All those in favor of a, um, ten percent levy increase for eighty five hundred dollars, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye, or no, I mean, I don't oppose.
Aye for the unopposed. Gotcha, uh, motion carries. But the good news is that you don't have to talk about that again. For next twelve months. Um. Okay, um, moving on to, um, item number five, resolution eleven oh twenty, eleven twenty twenty five, banking the property tax capacity. Um, and so, um, this would be a motion by the council to, um. And so this would be a motion by the council to bank the remaining available increase for another year. And so.
We have to re-bank what we have banked.
Every year we have to have a resolution to bank our.
Keep our bank.
Keep our bank.
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 11, 2025, banking property tax levy capacity.
Right. Make a motion for Mr. Parsons for Resolution 11, 2025, banking the property tax levy capacity. And I'm assuming it's the full amount, of course.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second on Mr. Hurt. Any discussion on this? This is kind of a definitely, definitely do thing. Okay, hearing known. All those in favor of banking the property tax levy capacity, Resolution 11, 2025, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's get to the fun stuff. Council to consider Resolution 13, 2025, the amended interlocal agreement with Winlock for side sewer inspections. This is an agreement we have with Winlock so that theirs or our employees can go back and forth and help out in times of of low, low employment. So for instance, in the past, we didn't have any backup for sewer testing and whatnot. And so Winlock was able to come over, send their operator over and run, do some wastewater plant operations. We were also utilizing them before we had the capability of our own to do side sewer inspections. And so this just keeps that interlocal agreement available to us with some updated numbers. We don't foresee needing to use this, but it's great to have in emergencies.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 13 dash 2025 amended ILA with Winlock.
We have a motion for Mr. Parsons to approve Resolution 13, 2025. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second on Mr. Hurt. Any other discussion or questions on that? Again, this doesn't cost us anything if we don't use it. It's just a good thing to have. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of Resolution 13, 2025, we amended interlocal agreement with Winlock for sewer inspections, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Council to consider closing A Street between 7th and 5th and the special event insurance purchase for the Christmas parade. Christmas, can I say that? I can say Christmas. I'm going to say Christmas. Just for you, Mike.
For Christmas?
Yeah.
Yes.
Obviously, the volunteers in the city are going to do a big Christmas event and they want to have a parade. And so this pays for the insurance and allows for the closing of the street.
I make a motion that we approve closing of A Street. How much is the insurance?
Insurance is $398.66. And Marlena has brought in more than that with the vendor fees. And so we're asking for you guys to allow the vendor fees towards that insurance.
Star right there. Make a motion that we approve the closing of A Street between 7th and 5th, the special event insurance purchase and parade.
Motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the, everything he said. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second on Mr. Hurt. Any discussion? I think it's been said three times already, so I'm going to double that, triple that. All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Council to consider Resolution 14, 2025, the interlocal agreement with Lewis County for co-management of the UGA. Did we, Kristen, did we, did we hear back from James on that today? Darren is going, yes.
All of the questions except for the right-of-way questions. The rest, they're willing to change the errors of their spelling. Some of it is just standard language that is what it is between co-management of the UGA. The only thing we're really waiting on is the right-of-way question that they had to ask.
Should we adopt that now or wait for those changes to come through? Probably wait for the changes to come through. Let's wait for the changes to come through. Okay. So real quick, this is the UGA co-management. A lot of the cities are signing up to do this. It's beneficial. It allows communication between the county and the city regarding building permits within the urban growth area. That way, if someone wants to build something in our UGA, the county has to run it by us first. It's a good thing. And we sent this to our attorney for review and she found all kinds of other things that other city attorneys and the county and whatnot hadn't found. And, and so they're going to fix that, make some modifications and get it back to us. We'll have that for you at the next meeting then, or soon, whatever county actually makes the changes. Any other discussion on that? Okay, moving on to number nine, Council to consider ordinance 09, 2025, amending city code to allow golf carts and what is WATVs? I can't remember. Not, what is the, I can't remember what the W stands for.
Wheel.
Wheel all-train vehicle.
Yes.
Yes. So a while back, there was a proposal to council to allow golf carts and four-wheeled ATVs on the streets. In your packet, there is a proposed code from the attorney on it. There'd be two different, there would be two parts of the code. There'd be a golf cart section and a WATV section. We don't have to vote on this tonight. I know you just got it and you probably want to dissect it a little bit. And so you, you can vote on it if you want, or you can take a couple of weeks to give us feedback on that. We can modify it somewhat. The state does have rules for golf carts and they do have rules for WATVs. And so some of our code is just adopting what the state suggests or mandates, but some of it we can modify.
There are some notes on the side.
Okay, Hanson might give us a little time. Kristen, you were saying?
There are notes on the side from the attorney. We gave the input on what would you guys want the fee to be? Are there any hours or locations that you wouldn't want them to be allowed? So those are some things you guys need to think about.
Some stuff like, like I said, a lot of it's flexible in what you do or do not want to do. Any other discussion on that? If you have questions, definitely get them to us and then we can feed that back to you before the next meeting. Anything else? Okay. Number 10, Council to discuss adding prayer or a moment of silence to the beginning of the council meeting. Hopefully you all had a chance to read Ms. Hanson's ideas on it.
Mike moved this to this meeting?
Ms. Ferguson did ask for it to be at this meeting. I know some of you said we didn't need to have it at this meeting and Mr. Ferguson isn't, Mr. Ferguson isn't here. So you can do whatever you want with this.
Let's see, we just take it off the, the agenda. Move on. Forward motion.
Table it indefinitely unless requested.
Yep.
Anybody else? Anyone else want to table it indefinitely unless requested? Mr. Hurt says yes. Anyone else?
Are, are you talking to me?
I'm talking to everybody, Jason. Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry. I got too close to the machine.
Oh, you bet. Yeah. So Mr. Parsons and Mr. Hurt have suggested just tabling this prayer issue indefinitely unless someone on the council wants to bring it up again.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Ms. Hanson, what are your feelings on this?
That's fine.
Okay.
I, I do also like Ms. Hanson's suggestion of a moment of silence. So that's still on the table if anybody wants to grab that one up, but, but as far as prayers.
Well, personally, personally, I would like to have the moment of silence that gives us the people that actually wanted to pray. We can pray and then we can get on to our city business. Yeah.
We might need to add a moment of silence after the public comment going forward. All right, well, saying that we have got four out of four council members saying table this indefinitely unless someone asks for it to be on the agenda. If you want this to be on the agenda in the future, let us know and we'll add it on. Any other discussion on that? Okay, that's the end of city business. Elected official comments. Anyone on the, elected officials have any comment before we close this meeting?
We are still taking sign-ups down at the cafe for families that are in need of assistance for Thanksgiving and but it's, we're, we're almost, we're almost done taking names, so you need to get in there quick.
Excellent. And Jason, were you guys doing a, a giving tree again this year at Little Crane?
Yeah.
That'll be a thing.
Yeah, we are.
All right.
Yeah, and those, and those names could be on the tree just right after Thanksgiving.
Perfect.
Thank you for doing that, Jason.
No problem. It's been, it's been really fun.
I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving next week. Enjoy your family, your bird and football.
Would you like to talk about the, the features of the Christmas event that the city's having? Like, I know you put us some announcements about it, but it seemed kind of relevant with like the shopping thing for kids and stuff.
We have a charity shop for kids where we can come shop for their parents. Not a income thing, just a given thing. We've started a couple of businesses that are providing quality gifts. We have a parade happening that night also. And right after that will be.
Thank you very much. But it seemed, it seemed relevant with, with the, this, this shopping thing for the kids where they can come down and then go shopping and it doesn't cost anything. And so they can get gifts for their, they can get some neat gifts for their, their families or whoever.
When is that?
December 6th from 10 to 1.
Yeah.
So if you know some kids in town and you could be put on with this, I would really love to hear.
I know Mr. Service has a, an email out, stuff asking for donations for building materials that he needs for the, down there and lights.
Yeah, we've almost secured most of the stuff now, I think, haven't we? As part of donations for.
We don't have any wire.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So the wire.
Which.
And then two by four wire. Like rope wires, really thin. John brought this by. It's the rebar wire, but I think it's a little too, you know, you bend it two times, it'll pop, you know? Don't forget Sidney LeBeau and Branch and Santa will be there too.
It's gonna be a lot of fun.
It's gonna be fun.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody. All right. Well, if there's no other elected official comments, this meeting's adjourned at 7:06 PM. Thank you, everybody, and have a good Thanksgiving.